Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Oh, we can do better than that. Welcome, welcome. We are honored tonight for our pledge of allegiance by the Band of Brothers 12034, which is Laverne. And our commander, Phil Ramirez, is here. But we are going to be led tonight by Maria Estrada, Army Sergeant, First Class, retired, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, if we could all rise, those who can, face the flag. And we'll let you lead us.
Please join me when we sing. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate that. We're very proud to have the Band of Brothers 12034 VFW. And thank you again for coming. We do really appreciate that. We're going to be, and I think it was Mr. Casha Faguita's idea, is that correct, for this? I think it's very important that we celebrate our military with our flag salute. So again, thank you guys very much. And thank you for serving. And with that, they're exiting. We have roll call. Mr. Domer.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Casha Faguita.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Lau.
Present.
Mayor Pro-Tim Crosby.
Here.
And Mayor Hepburn.
Here. I will introduce Mr. Domer. Ken Domer just came on our 19th of December meeting, is that correct? 19th of December, he came on as our new city manager. Also, Ms. Barlow came on just about the same time, just at the end of December, when Bob Kress, who'd been with us for over 30 years, retired. And we're very happy to have Ms. Barlow as our city attorney, but she's on the calendar tonight to make sure that she actually has the job, so we'll make sure we do this quickly. With that, we have a presentation tonight. That's Damian High School Water Polo 2022. I love them when we fill these halls up because it's been a while since we've had this many people in these, in our council chambers. I don't need my glasses, I guess. Someone made this big enough so I could read it. Congratulations, Damian. Great job. Congratulations. The 2022 Damian Water Polo completed one of the best seasons in school history. The team finished the season with a record 30 to 4, highlighted by beginning the year winning the Riverside Poly Tournament, finishing in fourth place at the nationally-recognized Coronado Tournament, and winning the Villa Park Tournament. The Spartans went into the end-season league tournament as the number-one seed, where they went undefeated and were crowned the baseline league champions, finishing league play 8 to zip. Great job. That is amazing. The team took the momentum into the playoffs and never looked back, going 4-0 in the CIF playoffs, defeating Portola High School 18 to 11 in the championship and the championship game. The team was led all season long by seniors Colin White and John Winters, who were named baseline league SEAL MVPs. Where are you two? Step up. Raise a hand. There you go. Congratulations. For his amazing effort, Colin White was also recognized as CIF SS Division Three Player of the Year, Third Player of the Year. Again, congratulations. The team was coached by Robert Chevaria and assisted by Jesse Johnson. If I could have the coaches come up, please? And staff? Congratulations, Coach. Congratulations. I'm going to turn the mic over to you. You're going to introduce your team. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for having us. You know, this couldn't have happened, you know, without these young men, Coach Jesse, the parent support. So I want to thank you once again for always believing in us. And now we're going to call out our roster, the guys that had to deal with Coach Jesse and I on a daily basis, right? The first athlete, Jonah Aguilera. Come on up. Come on up. Don't be shy.
Can you guys get him? Come on up. We got a gift for you and a certificate.
Peter Hale. I think, I think Peter Hale is wrestling, so he's not here today. Sebastian McCullough. Mikey Reese. John Winters. Sawyer Coleman. He's not here today. Matthew Higaretta. Xander Montoya. He's also the birthday boy today. Yep. Ben Chidi. Lucas Gebhardt. Brady Kabut. Zach Montoya. Jacob Basilic. Liam Gore. Ko Kusachi. Colin Olson. Colin White. And that is our team. Thank you.
Yeah. Let's get you guys in so you can get a picture. Parents, come on up. Get your pictures. Oh. Let's go tallest to the not as tallest. Okay? I don't say short. My sons are 6'5" and 6'4", so it's like, I'm just challenged a little bit. Oh, that's good. Come on, get in there. Let's go. Let's go, Damian. Oh, I need to get my camera. Darn it. Grab my phone. Yeah, give it. Yeah. Go ahead and take one. They'll move you there at 7:00. You guys get your pictures and we'll jump in. Hold on, we're going to get my photo, man. Oh, yeah, you know what? Okay. Let's do a silly picture. Come on. This is, come on. Silly picture. Silly picture. Come on. Oh, you guys. Come on, we get the coaches in there. Hold on, hold on. Okay, ready? Can we get the, our admin? Yes, please, everybody. Can we get you guys in? Come on. Come on, guys. Rick, Rick. Smile, 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 smile. Every outfit, every outfit. Make it good.
You gotta do selfie on the mayor.
Can you pull the question down?
Ready? Stay there. One, two, three. Count three, say champions. One, two, three.
Champions!
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys, very much. It's just a testament to tell how wonderful our school districts are. Whether it be private schools or not, Laverne-San Dimas has got some amazing schools. We put out some amazing athletes and scholars. So congratulations, guys, very much. An amazing season, and next year, just do it again. That's easy, right? Thank you, guys. You know, if you guys, if you, we have one more presentation, unless you guys wanted to go now, it's up to you guys. You wait. Okay. Come on, guys. We got one more presentation, then we'll turn y'all loose. Congratulations again. I wish they would have blown this one up. Chief Nigg. Yeah, those are mine. Thank you. This is a presentation to Hillcrest Community. I'm going to turn the mic over to Chief Nigg, and he's going to give a little talk.
Explanation.
Explanation talk.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'm so glad that we were able to take the time to recognize the efforts of our Hillcrest partners and ultimately what we were able to pull off through this holiday season with the Spark of Love. For those who aren't familiar, the Spark of Love is a 30-year tradition that KBC-7 pioneers. You all see the commercials on TV every single year, and they partner with Southern California Fire Departments and fire stations all over the Southland. And each one of those communities that takes part in it with KBC-7, they have the opportunity to contribute back to the bigger conglomerate that is the Spark of Love campaign, or they can work to keep all of those toys in the community, which has always been a big thing for me. So of course, even though the Laverne Fire Department's always done the Spark of Love campaign, I wasn't able to ultimately determine if we kept all those toys in our community and ultimately gave back to our community holistically. So that was a priority of mine going into the season. So last year, or the first year when I came here, quickly realized that, just as was my experience in every other city, it's a huge, huge lift to make that whole process work, from collecting the toys to taking the toys, storing the toys, to sorting through the toys, and ultimately giving out the toys. It's far more than we are capable of doing. So of course, I look to find a community partner that is not only a staple in our community, but just really, really willing and ready and eager to work with the department in accomplishing that task for the betterment of our community. Case in point, we found Hillcrest, a huge staple in our community, who is ready, eager, and willing to jump at the opportunity to store the toys, to sort through all of these toys, and then ultimately hand the toys out, obviously with the help of our Hillcrest CERT members here as well, which is another testament to all of their volunteer hours and everything that they do, continue to do for this community. So all in all, we were able to help 22 families within the community of Laverne, and we collected 20 boys of, 20 boxes of toys that each of you sorted through and gave a lot of time for. So with that, I'd like to hand it back over to Mayor Hepburn so that you can formally recognize you for all of your efforts. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chief. In November 2022, Hillcrest partnered with the Laverne Fire Department for the 30th anniversary of Sparkled Love Toy Drive. Hillcrest selflessly provided the Laverne Fire Department with much-needed storage for the many toys, and I'm talking a lot of toys. You've never seen so many toys. And bikes that were donated this year. They also coordinated a dedicated and passionate team of volunteers to sort many boxes of toys and bikes and create a system for distributing them to families need the week before Christmas. That's why the CERT people are very organized and they know how to do it. I watched them. They were, you didn't want to get in their way. They were amazing. The Toy Drive is a big lift each year, and Hillcrest's partnership was an incredible help during such a busy season. The Laverne Fire Department thanks Hillcrest for being such an amazing partner, along with our CEO, Matthew Neely. Matthew, say hi. Without Matthew, what couldn't happen? Because he has to say yes. And helping to make Sparkle of Toy Drive such a great success. Dennis Smith, who also serves as the Laverne CERT Team Lead, will be accepting his certificate of recognition on behalf of all the Hillcrest volunteers. Dennis. Thank you. Can we get all the CERT? Let's go. Please. Come on, come on. You guys can all come down. Come on, get in the picture. Come on. Let's go.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, let's scooch.
Okay, now a silly one.
Thank you all very much. Yes.
I'd like to just say one word, and that is the real heroes of this effort this year were all of the members of the community. It was outstanding, the number of gifts that we received to be able to distribute to the children in our community and the neighboring communities. So I, all I can say is, wow. When we walked into the room and saw the number of toys that were there to be distributed, we were overwhelmed. But we were very happy to be a partner, and we look forward to doing it in future years and reaching out even to more families. Thank you.
You heard that, Matthew? This would not have happened without a number of people. First of all, the Fire Department, also Hillcrest, let us use the meeting hall, and I'm telling you, it was a lot of toys. But also, Councilmember Cash was instrumental between the Crazy Bear Bikes, who got, I don't know, was it 30 bikes? And then also Laverne Brewery. They were there with their trucks. I know Councilmember Johnson was there with his truck. Councilmember Cash was there with his truck. We were helping, but the Fire Department, we had trucks, we had staff. Kudos to Chief. Thank you very much for supplying that. But again, we could not do it without Hillcrest, could not do it without a partner and all those donations. So thank you all very much. And also our city and our city staff that allows us to do that. So with that, we're going to do a five-minute recess, so you guys can all get out of here. And again, congratulations, Damian. Congratulations and thank you for Hillcrest. We really appreciate it. Everybody have a great week and Happy New Year. We have announcements of upcoming community events. We have Sherri Best. Come on up.
All right. First of all, for those of you who get the Inland Valley Daily Bulletin, you may have seen that the Historical Society was mentioned by David Allen. On the January 11th edition of the Daily Bulletin, David Allen, a newspaper columnist, had this to say about his experience as a speaker on January 9th for the Laverne Historical Society. And he wrote, "Despite the rain on Monday afternoon, a gratifying 50 people showed up to Laverne's Hillcrest Meeting House to hear me read from my LA County Fair book. A man who saw me several years and 30 pounds ago walked up and exclaimed, 'You're skinnier than?' Expletive." Apparently. "A woman confided that she clips favorite columns of mine and keeps them in a shoebox. And someone from the Laverne Historical Society, the sponsor, sent me home with a small bag of Meyer lemons." Homie Laverne puts the personal in personal appearances. "The college student who did the camera work for the local public access channel and was thus obligated to attend got in the sales line afterwards. To my amazement, she bought my Pomona A to Z book, sharing a smile and telling me that she was, is a Laverne native. Pardon me while I brush away a raindrop." So we got some nice press in the paper. The YouTube video of Mr. Allen's presentation is posted on the Laverne Historical Society website. You can watch it anytime. Now for announcements. On January 21st, this Saturday, we're going to look for dinosaurs in Laverne's backyard. The society is sponsoring a tour of the Raymond M. Alf Museum of Paleontology on the grounds of the Webb School in Claremont. How many of you knew this was in our backyard? A museum of paleontology, pretty cool. The tour begins at 11:00 a.m. The cost is $9 for seniors and children who are 5 to 12 years. General admission is $12. If you wish to carpool, meet at 3949 Bradford Street at 10:30 to share a ride. Please contact me to sign up. This is a family-friendly event, and I'm putting some flyers out on the table. That will be, this will be a lot of fun and very instructive. We would also like to report on a very special award. Tomorrow, the Laverne Historical Society will receive the 2023 Excellence in Laverne Award in the nonprofit category from the Chamber of Commerce. This is, yep. This is an important honor, and we will be at chases in full force to say thank you to the Chamber and all LVH members. And finally, I will remind you that January is our membership drive, so if you haven't done so already, pay up. $25 for a couple, $20 for an individual, and if you really want to not have to be nagged by me about this, $200 for a life membership. It's a 10-year insurance policy. You're buying your 20 bucks a year, and you're going to bet that you will then make a lot of money and become a member of the Historical Society and enjoy our many valuable activities. Thank you very much. I'll put a few flowers.
Thank you, Sherri. And you're still accepting donations for the truck, is that correct?
Always.
Okay, good. Money's always appreciated.
Money is always appreciated.
Mr. May.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Bush, city staff, Laverne residents, Happy New Year to everybody. It's been a while since I've been here, so I think it was the last time I was here, I think it was last September. I was on leave, so I'm glad to be back. I just want to bring some things that are happening at our library. We are still continuing with our current session of the Smarty Pants Storytime that's held every Friday from 11:30 till 12 o'clock, and we still have storytimes on January 20th, January 27th, February 3rd, and then we're going to take a two-week break and resume the next storytime session, which will be on February 24th. The Smarty Pants Storytimes are for ages 2 to 5 with a parent or caregiver. They involve songs, rhymes, emotion activities, and attendance is limited, so registration, pre-registration is required, and you can do that one week before each storytime by coming to the library or going to the county's online website under visit.lacountylibrary.org/events. So that's what's going on. And on January 25th at 6 o'clock, which is a Wednesday, we're having a program called Create a Dream Jar. It's based on the work of Dr. Martin Luther King and his iconic speech, "I Have a Dream" speech. So it's for ages 5 to 12 with a parent caregiver, and the people attending will be given a jar, and then they will write dreams for themselves and the world inside the jar. So that's what's happening. When we have more, I'll be here announcing those events. Okay, thanks.
If you're not retired.
I'm not retired.
Come on, George.
Don't do that to me.
This is, any announcements? Not public comment, but announcements? Anybody else? Come on up, Avon. Ms. Gallegos, sorry.
Senor Hepburn. Two things. I just want to let everybody know that I did attend at Hillcrest, at the gallery at Hillcrest, a local, an artist, she has a presentation going on at Hillcrest, and it's called "Embracing Ghosts," and her name is Stacy Jordan. They had a meet and greet last week. I do want to encourage people to go and check it out, free of admission. It's in the meeting house upstairs. Her art, Stacy Jordan's art, may be, may push the needle for some and might make people feel a little bit uncomfortable because she really, her art is really driven by social and cultural inequities. However, the reason why I wanted to bring it up today is because Stacy Jordan was raised in Laverne. She was raised in Laverne. She went to Benito High School, Cal Poly Pomona, and her mother, who made an appearance at the meet and greet, also still lives in Laverne. So I thought it was a really great story of hers to have talked about being raised in Laverne and coming back and being able to show her art. So I think it's really important if anybody wants to go and support her local artists, and she's a really, she was a really great speaker. So that's one thing that I wanted to bring to everyone's attention. The second thing is, the Cultural Awareness and Social Inclusion Committee, CASI, will be meeting on every first Wednesday of the month, so I invite you to join us. And still on the Hillcrest theme, we have found a permanent home for our meetings as the, as Hillcrest has decided to let us use and book their citrus room for the remainder of the year. So it's nice for us, for CASI, to have a permanent place. So I invite everybody to come to our CASI meetings, first Wednesdays of every month at 5:00 p.m. at the citrus room in Hillcrest. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Council, any announcements? Councilmember Lau.
Good evening, Councilmember Carter. How are you?
Good to see you.
Really briefly, for those that are interested in attending the Tri-Cities Mental Health meeting, our meeting is tomorrow at 5:00 p.m., and it is via Zoom still, and you can find their link on their website. But I do encourage folks to participate because they do talk about the amazing services that they provide, not only to our community, but to our neighboring cities as well, to veterans, to the youth, just to a whole host of folks. And so they're doing some really great work there, and I think it's something to be proud of, but also something to take advantage of if you ever are in any need or know of anyone in need. And then Ms. Best did allude to this, but the Excellence in Laverne Awards are happening tomorrow night, and I don't know if there are any extra tickets left, but you, I believe you can go to the Chambers link and buy tickets there if you're interested. So please come by and see our amazing organizations and businesses and celebrate their successes in our city.
Thank you, Councilmember Lau. Just a couple items. January 18th, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., the Sowing Seeds for Life Drive Through Food Pantry, which is at the Charisma Life Church, 305 East Arrow Highway, Pomona. I think I posted on my Facebook page, but I might give to the city too, but this is tomorrow, and basically, while supplies last, though. They've been, Sowing Seeds for Life has been an amazing generous donor to a lot of the families in need, so, but they do have at the Charisma Life Church, just for reason of the parking lot and off Arrow Highway, it's a better location, so. Also, they're talking about the Excellence Business of the Year Awards and the Excellence in Laverne. And the Business of the Year was Laverne Physical Therapy. New Business of the Year is Baglerie and Brewes. Family-owned Business of the Year, Norm's Hanger Coffee Shop. Employer of the Year is Forest Street Mill. Nonprofit of the Year, Laverne Historical Society. Yay, 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 yay. Okay? And then one of the real important ones, too, they're all very important, but the Brian McNerney Ambassador of the Year goes to Mia Valdez from Mia Valdez Beauty. So congratulations to all the businesses that, that got these awards, and also thank you to Leah in the Chamber and Juan Fuentes, who is the president, and they do a great job. Without the backbone of these businesses in our community, we would not have the community we live in. So we really appreciate all the businesses here. So with that, city manager, Ken Domer, do you have something that you wanted to discuss on?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, we had a couple residents contact us today about an issue with the dog licensing in the Inland Valley Humane Society. Basically, there's some letters that are going out that makes it seem they weren't able to update a lot of their information. So I was able to call over to Nicole and talk about what is going on, and she was very responsive on getting information back. They've updated their social media and their website. They had to change over to a new third-party contractor, DocuPet, probably 18 months or so ago, but some of the earlier information was not transitioned well. So if you do get a notice that there's a delay or a lack of payment or something like that, please go to their website or look at their social media, and they'll tell you how to get through it, and you will contact DocuPet or the IVHS to remedy that. So just wanted to make sure people were aware that that issue is out there, they've identified it, and they've remedied it, so.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gallegos had said something about the CASI group, which is now meeting at the, at Hillcrest. There was some confusion as far as our city's involvement with CASI, and I know there was an item on that regarding discussion of the future of CASI in the city of Laverne. So I would like So I would like our new city manager and our attorney to, I think it would benefit all of us to review all of our committees, our resolutions, and to make sure that, that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, reforming these committees and how they function with the city, because a lot of the committees have a lot of staff, and, and that's a taxpayer issue with all of our taxpayers, all of us included, to have staff at our, at some of the commissions in the meeting. So if we could review that and get back to the council, I know it's going to take a little bit of time to review and the resolutions to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, and then we're doing on the legal aspect of it, too, so. With that, anyone else have any announcements? With that, we're going to move to consent calendar. Do we have any items pulled? Mr. Domer?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions from council on the consent? With that, I'll take a motion, if you can get that thing working.
I move to approve a consent calendar.
Second. Vote, please. We're going to call it because the cameras aren't working, so.
That item is approved 5-0.
Beautiful.
Okay, we move to Resolution Number 2301.
Who's going to take that one? Candace. Ms. Bocock. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Laverne County, Los Angeles, State of California, Designating Kimberly Hall Barlow as City Attorney. No, am I? Sorry, Candace. I don't think so, Candace.
That was under consent.
That was under consent, sorry.
Are you going to make me right out of the room?
We're not sure, we're going to vote again.
It's under 23.
Where is it? 23? 23? I got you up, though, didn't I?
Which one?
Oh, public hearings.
So around public hearings.
I was just testing you. Hey, it's the first meeting after the first of the year, right? Okay, public hearings. Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG for 2023-24. Candace Bocock will be taking this. Candace Moffett-Bocock will be taking this.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. The estimated funding for the Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG, will, for Laverne, is estimated to be about $156,000, $156,000 for fiscal year 23-24. This will allow the city to continue funding 20% of the allocation to the Senior Hot Lunch Program, which is about $31,000, as it has been for the last 20 years. This amount cannot be increased, and no other public service program funding is an option due to the Community Development Commission regulation to not exceed 20% for public service programs. Staff is also recommending that $58,000 be allocated to the sidewalk repair program, as in previous years, providing for the removal of architectural barriers on damaged sidewalks throughout the city. Staff has been working to identify projects to spend the remaining unallocated balance from previous years, which has been added up to about $500,000. It continues to be difficult for Laverne to find programs that will be deemed eligible since there's no longer census blocks within the city that qualify for 51% low mod. This prohibits creating any programs that would qualify as having an area-wide benefit within the community unless the project is directed towards removing material and architectural barriers, which restrict the mobility and accessibility of elderly or handicapped persons to public buildings. Therefore, staff has scheduled an audit that will be completed at City Hall this week to identify possible projects inside and out, some including ramps or ADA-compliant front counters. Once the complete list is compiled, staff will present the project to the Community Development Commission to determine eligibility and cost. If approved by the commission, staff will then bring back the proposal before the City Council for your consideration in the next couple months. In the meantime, for the Senior Hot Lunch Program to have a July 1 start date, it's recommended that the City Council conduct the public hearing regarding the allocation of the 23-24 CDBG funds and also adopt Resolution 23-03 approving the Senior Hot Lunch Program and sidewalk repair project for funding. I am available if you have any other questions.
Council, any questions for staff who are going to public?
Question, I mean, I'm always frustrated that we can't use the money that we're given because we don't have projects that qualify. Anything, I know we're looking at police and fire as far as improvements in those facilities. Any chance that we could use any of that money for enhancements to those facilities?
So we have looked into that. The only area of the public safety building that we can improve are going to be that are, that can be accessed by the public for ADA and disability standards.
And even though that we don't have the proper restrooms in the facility now for our current use?
That project specifically was brought up, and we tried as hard as we could to find, to get that census tract to be at 51% low mod, and it's at, because there's a bunch of census tracts that that station serves. That's how we were trying to say. And it ended up being about 50%, 49, I think, 49%, and they said, no, you can't do it.
So who do we need to talk to, what, with the federal government to, because these are federal funds, right? So who do we need to lobby to get that changed?
I believe that they've found, I could be mistaken, I believe funding has been found for the public safety projects, and we are now, like I said, looking to spend, and all of this money, we are looking to spend all of this money on ADA improvements for City Hall, inside and out. So I, we have a step forward to spend it.
Yeah, I just hate having to sell these funds for, you know.
Well, we can't sell them.
Can't sell them.
These, which are the funds that we sell?
Those are the measure.
Transportation.
Transportation, yeah.
And those, those funds can't be used to improve our roads, like B Street or Arrow Highway, where the roots are causing problems, and the train tracks at Benita and.
I, you know, you're preaching to the choir because that was my thing. We've been, when you were on council years ago, and then for me, it's like, we've got this $525,000, it's just we can only use a certain portion of it, and we've got a lot of people in this community that could use it. I mean, seriously. And it's just, I know it's frustrating because you're tied to the federal mandate of how you can use these, but I think we need to get really creative here. Councilmember Lau, you got your, you're trying to push your button.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I could, real quick, yeah, that's one of the things on CDBG funding, the eligibility is very strict to low mod, and as Candace was saying, we don't have those census-eligible districts here, but there are presumptions. So ADA, so curb ramps, sidewalks, senior issues, so that's why we are looking at this week at all ADA counters. We have some very antiquated counters. They are not ADA-accessible. Door openings, items like that, and then based on leftover revenue from there, looking at sidewalk improvement projects throughout the community, because it is presumed, and so therefore it can be in an area if there's uplifting, if there's displacement, if there's no sidewalk, you can put in sidewalk, and it's under the presumed, it is an eligible cost.
Not necessarily for an individual who's having financial issues and needed repairs, even if they're ADA.
Correct, correct.
So my only comment was that, similar to Councilmember Johnson, and I'm sure everybody on this council, it is the frustration that we face every time that we have this nice pocket of money, but I will say that I did reach out to staff, I did talk to the city manager, and I know that he's had conversations with Candace, and rest assured that they are looking at ways to be innovative and creative so that we can use these funds and not just have them sit somewhere. So I would like to know, you know, when you're able to do the audit and you're able to find out, you know, what can we use it for, just a report back so that we can share that with the community somehow. So if you could do that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Especially now with a lot of federal and state dollars that are going to projects, it's like, it's just pool of money that just sits there, and we can't do anything with it except a few things, so. With that, I think I'll close this and go to public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on this item? Robin Carter.
Hello, Robin Carter. And I have been asking for years for someone to look up in Esperanza. The sidewalks up there are terrible. I know you live by me, Tim, you go up there. It's not used by a lot of people that don't go north in Laverne, but those sidewalks are, there is lawsuit waiting to happen, and I've said that for many years. And they, the sidewalks are literally lifted from all the trees that are in the parkways, and also the curbs now, or if the sidewalks like this, the curbs down here, so anybody, you know, coming down, walking, could trip over that, you know, and I'm talking about four inches high. So I'd really love for staff to look at Esperanza going, you know, obviously north, that's where the sidewalks are, are on the west side of the street, all those sidewalks there.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on this item? Nothing from, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing then. Back up to here, do we, any other discussion? I'll take a motion.
I'd like to move to approve and adopt Resolution 23-03 approving the proposed projects for funding.
I'll second.
Vote, please.
And that item was approved 5-0.
Thank you. We will move to public comments. If I can get my papers here. Public comments and communications. Anyone wish to speak on public comments? Welcome.
You're going to love this one.
Uh-oh. I can't comment, sorry.
Anne Anderson, Sloan Drive. I am going to be talking about the Amherst Project and why the city is making an HOA pay for a public park. I don't care if it's legal or not legal. It is not right. Everybody here knows what an HOA is, I guess, okay? And it's a private community, and it already has to pay for its streets, its sidewalks, like she was just, if the sidewalks break, this HOA has to pay for it, has to pay for insurance, has to pay for a property manager and common area. And now you're going to put a public park on that? It's, it's not fair. It's not right, and I don't understand even why you're doing it. There's no parking in there for a public park. So that means people coming to that park are either going to park in their HOA, on their streets that they have to take care of, or they're going to park on Amherst, and that's going to be a problem on Amherst. I don't understand why that wasn't, I understand that it's on matchbox properties, you know, a whole house on a matchbox property, and you probably could put two lawn chairs in the backyard, okay? So, yeah, they wanted to give them a park. That's fine. Let them have the park. I know it's over now, and you're not going to be able to put a gate there because the plans are all done, and it's going to be hard to change that, but you know what? Give it to them. Give it to them so they can take care of the park themselves. They eventually could probably put a wrought iron fence around that park and put gates on it and let, and get, put the codes on, you know, those lock codes, and give it to the homeowners there. There's only 42 homeowners there. You're putting a burden on them, because let's take, let's take an example. They're going to have to go get insurance. So now they're going to say, we need insurance for our homeowners' association, but we also have to take care of the public park. What is that going to cost them? Who wants to insure the public park also? And then what happens down the road? God forbid, somebody dies in that park, and somebody gets an attorney, of course, they're going to come to the city first because it's a public park, but once they find out that it's the homeowners' association who's been taking care of the park, they're going to come over after that homeowners' association. And as we all know, if you ever read CC&Rs, there's going to be like a supplemental cost to those people if, to pay those, that attorney fees. And so what happens if they can't afford, these are new people moving in. What's going to happen if they can't pay those attorney fees? They're going to get, they're going to get a special assessment, and would have, how these people, how are they going to pay that if they can't pay it? Well, what's first going to happen is they're going to get fines for not paying their fees. Second, they're going to start paying attorney fees for get, for getting, what do you, what comes next? Okay, first they're going to get, they're going to get fines, and then they're going to get a lien put against their house. And these are new people moving in. These are families, and they pay all those attorney fees. And if they can't pay that, then, you know, they can get the foreclosed on. You're putting, you're putting a financial burden on these people for the future. It may not be next year. It may not be five years from now, but that CC&Rs is good for the lifetime. What happens then? You, we, if it's a public park, the public should pay for it. If it's a private park, then they should pay for it. And this, and anybody who moves in an association, they want their property values to be, stay up. That's why we do it, because it's, it's pretty, you know, everybody's doing the same thing and keeping the values up. I can't see why people would move in and pay for a public park. If it was a private park, then they could say, hey, we don't have a backyard, but we have a private park here, okay? That would bring the property values up, not a public park. There's so many things wrong with this, I don't understand why the city did it this way. It's not fair. It's not fair to have 42 homeowners pay for a public park. It, it doesn't even make sense. It, it shouldn't be. Give that, I don't know who owns that property on the park part. I don't know if it's the whole, is that the whole association property, or is the public park the city's property? If a city property, give it to, give it to those homeowners, because I don't know where these people are going to park. And you already have a problem with the people in Amherst with the traffic situation, and they're going to be parking out there. Why start all this trouble with these people, with our neighborhoods?
Got it. Thank you.
Wait a minute, I'm not done. Mr. Crosby, I want to thank you for your, how you're handling your district. I know you go to the motor, I, you go to the, the homes and talk to people, you talk to people in there, and I appreciate that. I really do. But those people are your constituents, and I hope you do something about this, because what's next? We start building these little houses, I mean, these big houses on little properties, we might build more, and what's next? The, the guy says, let's put a public swimming pool in, and the homeowners are going to pay for the, the public swimming pool, or even, you know, it's ridiculous. This, this city shouldn't be doing this, and I don't know who made this legal, because how can you make, how can you, how can you have pub, I mean, how can you have a private community paying for a public park? These people are already paying for the other parks, and you're going to also charge them for that park, too? It's not fair. Laverne has to be better than this and not try to find little ways to get around it. I hope we're not that broke, or we're going to start charging people for public parks. That's it.
Thank you, Hannah.
Thank you again, Mr. Crosby.
Anyone else? Anybody online? Nope, no one. Seeing no further, we'll close public comment, bring it up to the dais. Who would like to start? Councilmember Lau, if you can start it, I'm sorry.
Sure. Do you want to go? Okay. I just wanted to say thank you publicly to our folks at Public Works, our staff, for everything that they've done. I'm sure you've noticed around town, when it was raining really hard, areas flooded, there were a lot of, you know, different things that had to be taken care of, and I appreciate the work that happens often, too often unnoticed by people, because, you know, we just want things to work, but we don't think about all the time that the things that people have to do to make that work. So I want to say thank you to your team and to the folks that were working very hard to make sure that we were safe and that there were good roadways and good places for us to be able to travel. So thank you for that, and I know more water is coming. So thank you in advance also for the anticipated work that you will be having to do. I also wanted to publicly acknowledge that at the last Cassie meeting, I saw some lovely familiar faces, so it was very nice to see other folks participate in the meeting. It was a packed room. I will try to bring more candy next time, but thank you so much for coming and for, you know, voicing your opinions and for sharing your thoughts, and just, it was a really good community feel, and I think Ms. Bochamp said, wow, it's really informal in here, probably in comparison to the meetings you see here, but I just think, you know, thank you to the leaders. But I just think, you know, thank you to the leadership of Cassie for forwarding that and for the community members for participating, and I echo Ms. Gayogos' comments about attending the next meeting if you are available. And obviously, Monday, you know, we're here on a Tuesday night because yesterday was MLK Day, and I know that, you know, sometimes we tend to celebrate things like just in the moment, but just thinking about the principles and the values and how can we carry that throughout the year and how can we continue to strive to make our community better and better. So thank you to everybody. Happy New Year. Stage safe and dry, all that kind of good stuff. May there be no water damage at your house. There were some scares, I know, in some of my neighbors' homes, but thank you. Be kind. Have a good week.
Thank you, Councilmember Lau. Mayor Pro Tem Crosby.
Well, a lot has happened since our last meeting. We had the spectacular Christmas morning event. Our firefighter Kenny Velacino...Senor was my driver of the fire truck in doing the wedge, and I appreciate...I got to be Santa this year. I told them I put a little COVID weight on that I could do that, too. Well, the kids are asleep right now, so. But I just want to thank our people that's working out. We had so many volunteers, Jesse Cervantes, Amanda Trye, for keeping all the routes stocked. We had the Benita Girls softball team and Darren Beaumont for helping with the runners and volunteers, so many of them coming out there, so appreciate them really helping out. This is the big, I believe, the one event that touches all of Laverne, and it brings so many people out together. We do a lot of great things downtown. Sherry does a lot of great things with the Historical Society, but our Christmas morning is...really hits all parts of our city and really, really do appreciate the support. It does take a lot of effort from our staff. It does take a lot of effort from our volunteers, but it is a great, great event. Over the holiday, I had a couple of weeks off from work, so I want to thank JR for giving me a tour of the Laverne City Yard, especially seeing Colin Purdy and the park crew, their training and using our California JPIA risk management training. Richard Martinez, Ryan Coyote...Cioti and Joe Viera taking some time to talk to me. Went by the Laverne Police Department, Chief Flores and Sergeant Mark Gutierrez and the entire police department. Thank you for your hospitality as well. I had a special appreciation to our dispatchers. They watch over our city 24 hours a day, and if you've ever been in their room, they are there. They can't go anywhere outside, and just to make sure that our city's safe. So some really special, special people they're watching. Tomorrow, I'll be at the Laverne Chambers Excellence Awards, and then I'd also like to thank Councilmember Cash Guita for being our representative, is approved tonight on the San Gabriel Mosquito Vector Control Board. So thank you again for stepping up and doing that, too.
Four years. Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Oh, I mean, the Christmas morning, that was a very special time. I got to spend with my wife Lori on the fire truck, and she got a firsthand experience as far as delivering candies. That is a special part of being in Laverne. Youth sports, baseball's getting ready to go. They'll have sign-ups here pretty quick. It's just a good place to be. Laverne is a good place to be right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Cash.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, everyone. Pretty much, I repeat the same sentiments exactly. It is like the...you're right, it is the biggest time of year, really, I think, twice, the Fourth of July Parade, which, you know, we're about five months out, and it's gonna be a great time. At that time, we all get together and Christmas...and during Christmas time, we get out there. And the area that I was up there, it's all hills, and, you know, luckily, I had some very good runners from Damien and some other community members that were there that were just hiking up those hills, and it was...it was good to see everybody really working together. Thank you for those that are in Public Works during our storm that we had that were out there. Saw one of those trees that were down and just the flooding that was out there, but you saw our staff out there working hard in the rain, or others staying dry. We like to say it's good army training, and so that was a fun time to see, but it was good to see. And I look forward to continuing going out in the community, addressing some of the issues. Some of them were brought up today with the Inland Valley Humane Site. Thank you, City Manager, for addressing that issue. It's really important to help people like myself and there are responsible pet owners that are doing the right thing, and so I'll probably get a bill right now for saying that, but that's okay. They got me twice, that's okay.
How many animals do you have?
They don't know about my...they don't know about my Komodo dragon, but that's another story. Yes, and we are selling eggs. But I want to say thank you again. It's a great city. Continue to do good, and I appreciate all the hard work that our city staff has, and I look forward to attending some events that's coming up for some grand opening for another amazing restaurant here in Laverne, here in Laverne, and just continue to do good. And I really appreciate the opportunity for serving on this, another adventure of the San Gabriel Valley Mosquito Vector Control Board. So hey, we have any issues, let me know. We have a subject matter expert, mosquitoes, pretty soon, vectors, so...hey, it's fun. It's a good opportunity, but it's nothing more than continue to have exposure for our great city out there in other communities to let us know, hey, we are here, and if they have any issues, you know, we're made available. So that's why you got me. So thank you again, and stay strong.
And make sure you bring the big mosquito to some of our functions.
I will.
It's huge. It's huge, but it's cool. Yeah, they do, and they come to communities. I was not able to attend the Christmas Day celebration because my daughter-in-law and my son had a new baby, so that was the 23rd of December, so you can imagine. We have Christmas Eve every year for the past 40 years. Generally, it was at my mother-in-law's house and our house. We were like, "When are you having the baby? We can't make the plans," you know? And then Christmas Eve was like, "I gotta miss it." And everybody does an amazing job. That's why our city is so well-loved. That's why the residents love living here, is the fact that all of the departments work well together, and Christmas Day is no exception. It's amazing, the Fire Department, all the people that donate their time, all the kids, and it's just absolutely amazing what our community does in those days. But...and also, I was driving around on the day after the rain, which was, I think it was Sunday or Saturday, Sunday, and then I went by Sneaky Park, and we had a police officer out. I wasn't paying any attention with one of the security guards from Laverne University. I drive by, then I look over, and I go, there was the tree that was...it was down. It's probably, what, over 100 years old in Sneaky Park? And so I went and talked to them, and they said apparently squirrels...she saw the tree fall, and it just literally was slow motion, but the squirrels were like jumping, jumping shit all over the place. So of course, Tim, being the mayor, I had to admit it with the mayor because it means it's sad to lose it, but the point was no one was hurt. Quiet day on Sunday, but that's where we live in Laverne. But anyway, Happy New Year to everyone. I know that the end of the year last year for some was tough. I know a lot of people that I know lost family members. Never fails, we lose family members, too. So bless those that lost those family members, and prayers and arts and prayers go out to you guys, and to those that met with families that haven't been together for a long time because of COVID, that's a great time. And just the fact that we all get together and we're starting a new year, let's just make 2023 an even better year. We have a new city manager. We have a new city attorney. We'll be soon, hopefully, have a new Public Works Director, so our city is moving on and all for the better, so we really appreciate that. So with that, we have a closed session. Yes? Mr. Johnson?
Regarding the closed session, one of those is with the Church of the Brethren, and there may be a conflict of interest with me being a member and being a past member of the committee that would deal with these contracts, so I'm gonna recruise myself from that portion of the closed session.
I have also...I am not an active member of the Church of the Brethren. I was when the kids were younger, but I really don't have any ties on any boards with the church, so if that's deemed a conflict, I can recruise myself, but... Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I appreciate that. We have a legal...we have a closed session tonight? Ms. Barlow? Two. Two items?
Yes, we have two closed sessions this evening. The first is conference with real property negotiator, property at 2425 East Street. The negotiating parties are the city manager, interim Public Works Director, and city attorney, along with the Laverne Church of the Brethren, price and terms of payment for a lease of parking lot. The second item is pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, conference with labor negotiators, negotiators, city manager, assistant city manager, and city attorney, and the employee organizations are Laverne City Employee Association, Laverne Police Officers' Association, Laverne Police Middle Management Association, and all unrepresented employees.
We will be adjourning in the closed session. We will not be reporting out, is that correct?
We do not anticipate a report out this evening.
Okay. Our next regular scheduled meeting will be Monday, February 6th, at 2023, obviously, at 6:30 PM. This meeting will go into closed session at 7:37 PM. Thank you, everybody. Sneaky Park is the park right next to where the...